It's gonna work, man.
We're going to have to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting for the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees. Time is seven oh three p.m. Why do we introduce the divide of the United States of America and the Republic of Japan? One nation, united on the principle of liberty and justice for all. This time I'd like to have some moments of silence on military, firefighters, road workers, sheriff's deputies. Thank you. Your call, Ms. Sovers.
Jefferson McQuaid.
The rest?
Jefferson McQuaid.
The rest?
Jefferson Mann.
First order of business. We have a swearing in ceremony or some sort of ceremony from the trustee of election. She has passed for a few minutes to be recognized for signing the name later here tonight. She was sworn in by prosecutor Matt Heck at the Township Association. They're already, and she officially doesn't have any official duties until January first. Did she leave it up before?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. She will back. I swear to support the Constitution of the United States. I swear to support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of State of Ohio. And the Constitution of the State of Ohio. And to faithfully discharge and perform. And to faithfully discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. All the duties incumbent upon me. At Jefferson Township Trustee.
Wait a minute, you got out of the real speech.
Well, I just wanted to thank all my family and friends and the community of Jefferson Township for your support and your trust that I'm going to work on making Jefferson Township a better place to live. For us all. Thank you.
And also for you.
This time, uh, we have no further minutes to alter on the agenda. Just the office of the board of trustees.
I want the Jefferson Township numbers.
Okay, where we can hear that? Where we're at on that, the back, the back paper, the back paper, the tower, right? On the back, turn it over. I guess you were on that package. It should have handwriting on it. You might have stepped on it, right? Turn over that back, open up the back package. There should be writing on it. No, see if you have the bottom of the package. But he doesn't have, I think he just stepped on it. Oh, it's there. Okay, right there where your finger is, that's the total amount that we have left to get to here by thirty-one December. We have to share the catalog, get it out of here by thirty-one December. And so, um, spoken in the work session, we need to discuss or verbal vote. If you guys want to, as have been suggested in the past, this purchase protective gear because that meets, fire protective gear because that meets the criteria of the CARES Act.
We will have a resolution that just had a simple vote, Jim, that we allow the buyer, he produced a PO, that we tell Chief Wright to proceed with that purchase when he has that PO they produced. Same type of papers or something as well.
Jim, you don't have a copy of this, do you? Here, I have it.
You got it?
Alright, so you want this on this form of getting a resolution?
Yeah, I mean, we'll get that and give it back to you.
Do you have a back, do you have a back to that?
No, we could just.
Do a vote, do a vote, tell them to listen, phone once we get to that point.
Okay, so continue on, I don't have any credit report. I'm gonna send you that later, um, because I've been trying to get the credit card receipts together. So I don't have October, November bank reconciliation done, so once I get those, I'll be giving you guys all the reports for that. And now that we've spoken this, do you, do we have anybody that's supposed to be ordering supplies? Because that would be the person who should have paid.
We'll say try to order supplies and we'll cut off my friend's office.
Well, I thought we ordered, as though we did, well, that's interesting. I was ordering my stuff, the staples, but, um, yeah, we were getting it from friends. Why did we get cut off our bill to pay the friends?
I don't know, I mean, I asked the question, he complained about no copyright protection in office, and I think, uh...
Yeah, I asked him several times.
He's got a colored printer and he's, I think he's on big part producer.
Yeah, I've asked him several times for paper, and he never gave me any, so I just assumed that he was keeping it all. But do you have a plan to order supplies? Because that's what our magistrate used to do for us.
I really hadn't addressed that issue because we have this backlog of invoices, and I figure until we get some of that cleared up, we're gonna have a lot of trouble. I'm already aware, recall, I put O'Reilly's road staff sent them to cut off the county garage this week.
My Democratic's all white, that's correct. But you just signed that check, then we should be able to turn that back down.
I'm surprised they cut us off for forty-one dollar a year.
It was two hundred.
Two hundred and eighty-one dollar a year.
Two hundred and twenty-two dollars, um, and, um, that's, they usually extend credit, and yes, you're right, I don't know why the two hundred and twenty-two dollars, that was several months. That's the only thing I have to say, is because we don't have the time. So my main concern is paying bills in the budget. Don't know what we can do to work this out, don't know what you need from me, and somebody needs to start contacting me and letting me know what you guys need in order for us to be, I'll be fine. The general works is, and I'm not a mind reader, I only can do what I can do. So as far as that, um, you guys sign the invoices that I have, I'm gonna be doing more as it goes on, as the week goes on, so I'll send you guys a text or something to tell you when there'll be more up here. Please, as soon as possible, get up here and sign them. Looks like you two are the only ones that are signing right now to the end of the year. payroll, um... That is what it is too, I can't, I put it up there in the box, I'll leave it up there for two months, I don't want it to get lost, so I, if you need to sign or say it again, you don't have to ask me because I've taken everything that I wanted to have and signed and put it in the file. Other than that, there is nothing more I have to say, I'm trying to keep on the best I can with HR, payroll, and fiscal office job, it's a lot of work. I just ask if you guys can please, maybe if you have to wait till the beginning of the year, but find me some help.
Motion to accept the fiscal's officers' report, pay those invoices, payments, and warrants.
Second.
Full call, please, Ms. Sovers.
Jefferson McQuaid.
Yes.
Jefferson McQuaid.
Yes.
Motion carries. General business. We still have meeting minutes in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one that are incomplete, I believe, for up to twenty-four months of meetings that have not been recorded or approved.
So are you proposing a solution? Or you just put it down?
Well, in previous meetings, I'm just, uh, for the purposes of the gallery, letting everybody know where we're at. The last decision that was made in the meeting was to have a future staff person complete the minutes, which, uh, that position's been vacant for several months. So, uh, that continues to be a problem with the hard finding. So we don't have minutes, we're still maybe Mr. Rothman on his version of the minutes. And we can't touch that because of the ethics charges. Okay, the same, Mr. Rothman?
What ethics charges?
Ethics, actually, it's an ethics referral from our audit.
No charges been filed?
No, this referral.
That's right.
So you still owe us thirty-seven hundred dollars. So what I'm going to do is the same thing we did for the funding recovery, but I'm gonna go ahead and send the quest with prosecutors to start the collection process on it, because we don't have minutes, and you're holding government funds. So unless you can clear that issue with the ethics board, we need to check the thirty-seven hundred. Okay, other old business. We've got the fire station fifty-nine, we've got a contractor that sent several emails to us regarding the payment for the work at that grounds. Have you seen the bathroom and signed off on the road over there?
Yes.
You know Wolf has, have you been down there to see it?
Yeah, he's been down there.
Okay.
I mean, he didn't have a problem with it.
Okay. Have you seen it?
Cause he signed it.
I don't know, I could ask him, but, uh, it's not here.
Well, he's here before.
So...
So just like, um, just like the building here and any other place, I need a letter from you guys signed, put in the records that you guys approved, the, the, whatever back, whenever you guys approved it. And then you guys tell me where you want to take the money from, and then I'll pay the bill.
Well, I approved the work.
Okay, I need a letter signed.
So, uh, the second thing that we're gonna need is, it's been, we didn't, never had an occupancy for that building, so before we can start using it, we've gotta get that cleared at count. So, so what you're saying is all you need is fund codes to fill that out?
I said I need a letter signed that says, yes, we approved this, and then I need a fund code.
Forty Road Project. Mr. Rothman, you've, um, shared some comments and email, you've got a problem with the quality of work, please enlighten me.
Uh, as I said in the email, which you should have read, that, uh, most asphalt work, two, three foot wide is as wide as you go by hand, you don't ever go over four foot wide, you don't ever do the width of the lane of traffic by hand, and when you do, you'll use a paper, it turns out like it was there. We have, whoever approved that job, whoever watched him do it, did not request that the contractor that did it have a paper. So we have no right to complain to the contractor of not paying the contractor. That is an internal issue in the road department, having that type of work done, without the right kind of equipment. So that's an internal issue, um, you wanna say I made a comment, yes, I made a comment, but there again, has the paperwork been processed in the correct manner so we get our bills paid?
The way they understand it, you're holding up payment?
I'm not holding up payment.
Seeing the quality of the work?
I am not holding up payment. You're putting words in my mouth again.
Okay, number one, the contractor agreed, which this was CG Construction, they agreed to do some training with our road staff, our road staff worked hand in hand with the contractor as learning exercise to do that. When I looked at the road, the whole thing is crumbling apart in clumps, yeah, it leads to complete overhaul, but something had to be done there. So it was a cooperative effort, internal, and with this contractor who's willing to teach and front some materials for this.
I have a problem with payment, I have a problem with internal, like I said, you'll do the proper paperwork, get the man paid. I'm not holding up payment. You're putting words in my mouth, I'm not holding up payment, do the paperwork, you're getting paid. If you want training, do training, you do training in a parking lot, you don't do training on a main, on, not on a main, on a roadway that Township drives on, number one, and you don't ever do that width of payment by hand, it's always telling the paper. That's an internal issue, nobody ever told me we did pay, there was a training process, there again, you know, we don't communicate, but pay the bill, do the paperwork and pay the bill. And I'm not holding it up, you're making false classifications, saying that I'm holding up the payment. There's a lot of bills that are township date and paid, I'm not holding them up, department heads aren't doing their part, doing their job.
Any other old business?
So, um, let me get the back of the, yeah, okay.
Right, new business. Uh, earlier this, I think it was last week, I sent an email out to the trustees. Mr. Ali, who owns the junkyard at the corner of Bird and Infirmary, has contacted the board wanting to submit an offer to the board trustees. So what, what I've done is basically Mr. Ali would like to come up, speak to us, get the conversation started with us, on some land that he's interested, he's identified that we're the owners of. So Mr. Ali, if you wanna come up, read your name and address into the record and kinda walk us through what you wanna do.
Hi, I'm Ali, and I'm the owner of Cyrus Auto Parts, the owner of Infirmary and Tardistry. So there is, uh, there's some properties, as you guys know, I purchased, you know, I tried to clean it up, I cut all trees, you know, paved it flat and tried to put a fence, which I already talked to your zoning officer, but doing that to make it look good for the, you know, community and also, you know, make it safer for neighbors and, and the businesses as well. There is three pieces of land, which, well, I'm pretty sure, uh, we had some issues before, forty-two Davenport, that, uh, that house, and, uh, and two properties next to it, so which is belonging to my snack cab, I believe. I already talked to the owners and they are okay if, you know, I believe you guys have your hands on this, you know, it's on the trusties right now, that piece of land.
The vacant lot next to forty-two?
Yes, next to forty-two and right next to Mrs. Lawson, uh, which is for the trusty, as far as I know. And, uh, so I'm trying to purchase those lands and just, you know, make it a square back there. I already started, uh, living back there, so as you know, we had a lot of problems, it was, it was big woods in the corner, and believe me, when I cleaned it up, I'm pretty sure Sheriff knows more about it, so they were, I mean, they were doing a lot of bad stuff back there, that's all I can say, and shooting and, you know, and coming to the lot and stealing course, kids and death, and, you know, trespassing the people property, of course, in order to come in. So what I did, I tried to do my best and I'm trying to make my fence all around it, you know, as eight foot tall, so people cannot see the mess inside the yard, you know what I'm saying, and that's all I'm trying to do.
So you have acquired forty-two Davenport?
Yes, I offered them, uh, and they are okay too, you know what I'm saying, they already accepted my offer. And, uh, but being honest with you, if the lands, which is right next to the forty-two Davenport, I'm sorry, people, I got a kind of heavy accent, I hope everyone understands me, so I apologize for that. And the lands next to the forty-two Davenport, which is belonging to the trusty, and I already have all the parcel numbers and I don't know if, yeah, can somebody, yeah, I'm sorry. So this is what trusty has.
Okay.
In this corner.
Yes, so we need to clear it.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I did this one, this is Mrs. Lawson, and this is the property. I claimed this one too, kind of, and right now it's pretty flat, as you guys can pass and see. And this, uh, this three lots is belonging to us as well. So I talked to, uh, I believe the last thing is a reader, I think a reader, forty-two Davenport, and they, they are okay to move out and, uh...
Who bought this first, who bought this house?
Oh, that's, that's Mrs. Lawson, right.
Okay.
To catch everybody up on forty-two Davenport, for those of you that are regulars at the meeting, the late Mr. Sherman would complain about forty-two Davenport in every single meetings. The nature of his complaints were that the people living there were living there without electricity, they were doing their business in five gallon buckets, then dumping it in the creek. There was several investigations for drug, I don't know if it was rated, it's been a problem property for us. But he kept forty-two Davenport in front of us for a lot of years. We never went up on complaints on that, so we're familiar with that. Township does own vacant lot next door to it, and right now, those people have junk cars and they've kind of absorbed that, and for whatever they're...
You do this work?
Yes, sir.
Now, what is the, uh, I mean, you fuck the zoning, what is it, what was? This shoe thought I was zoning the same?
Yeah, they changed the zoning before, hold me to, uh, my neighbor's house, which I'm not trying to send that away, but as long as I talk to the zoning officer here, I should be okay to move that way to make it a square. I don't know if you guys pass it at night or not, but after, uh, after I bought that property, I don't know, if you've been here before or not, I'm pretty sure those gentlemen have been in there before. So I put more than seven thousand tons of garbage to make it, make it good for the neighbors when they're looking at it, you know, from the... I could light it on it just like that as...
What were your intentions of the problem? What were your intentions of the problem?
I mean, just as salvage yard, you know, it's gonna stay the same, I mean, it's gonna change, but I believe if you compare that salvage yard to the one down the street, uh, great bars, you can, you can see a huge difference. I mean, at, at night, when you pass it, it's like a football field, you can see through it all the way, and, for some reason, my neighbor, Mrs. Lawson, she was the only one was unhappy with that, which I don't understand why, because I made it more secure even, uh, for her house, I don't understand. I mean, you could see people every night, and they were squatting back there.
So you have, I mean, a formal offer letter for us, or how did you want to approach this?
Actually, I was going to, uh, to approach this functionality and then, you know, if, uh, you're okay with it, you guys want it, so I'm gonna, uh, do it in my knowledge, I need to send the offer down here, what do you guys think?
We can't really do anything about it this evening anyway, uh, first off, I just, I want back to go look at it, second off, sale of any purchase, sale of any property, anything the Township owns has to be unanimous of vote by the three trustees. We want trustees not here, so appreciate you telling us all this, and you wanted to look at it, but you can't make a decision without saying, well, we're trustees here.
What's the name of the salvage yard?
Uh, Cyrus Auto Parts.
Thank you.
Right in the corner of the... It used to be Box Ford Shop.
Does, uh, does the audience want to ask Mr. Ali any questions on this? Cause he is basically approaching us for Township owned land.
Ask me. Everyone's more than welcome if you guys wanna come and take a look, you know, see how we operate it now.
I have to put anybody down. But somebody asked me something, and I said, what's up there? And I said, I told him, I said, there's nothing but junkyards. It's gotta stop somewhere. We're planning junk, we told, uh, let's see, I can remember, this guy can remember, Mennerville can remember, uh, Dickie James, to clean up, and then he built a fence around the fence, remember? Next to the park, I mean, instead of cleaning up stuff, he built another fence out there, Montgomery Motors. How can we ever improve it, we keep?
Can I, can I answer that? With all respect to you, man, fourteen families right now, they are feeding from that business right now. And, uh, I, I swear, you can come up and drug test every single one of them. They're not gonna fail. When I bought that property, when I cleaned it up, everybody probably should know this about, I mean, it's...
Sure, I understand, I understand.
When I, when I cleaned it up, I'm sorry, I picked up two full boxes of needles.
Sure.
People were working back there with twenty dollars a day. You can imagine, I mean, with that kind of operation, I understand, I agree with you a hundred percent, but as I said, you know, with the, with the amount of money that I spend back there, you know, just for my neighborhood, if people cross the street, uh, on Infirmary, there was no reason for me to, to cut everything down, putting gravel, making a nice parking lot for my neighbors, all that, light it up at night, putting cylinders... putting gravel, making a nice parking lot for my neighbors, all that, light it up at night, putting 7,000 tons, that's a big mountain, we're talking about a big mountain, I mean, and that costs a lot of money. We're just talking about a little, uh, job in Jefferson Township and you know how much.
Sure, I understand it, but we're gonna leak some oil, you can't stop that.
Oh, yeah.
But in infirmary room, uh, Bob Box Body Shop, Cecil was up there. Cecil made machine gun soldiers, I'm way ahead of you guys, but Cecil made machine gun soldiers up there, that's okay, everybody's right there. My hand right off is a shoe, we got too many junkyards in Jefferson Township when we're trying to improve. And I don't wanna knock anybody down, but so we got junkyards out here, we gotta come up someplace.
I understand that.
I mean, I understand too, cause I do that kind of work, but we have too many junkyards.
What I said was, everybody from this room, more than welcome, man, you can come in and see the operation. If I was not sure about my operation, I wouldn't tell you that.
Last thing I'm gonna say, all of the rooms are clean at first.
We drain all of the oil, antifreeze, gas, all of it, just to make it look good. I made my, uh, I moved the whole operation inside that green building and I spent tons of money just to make it operational. First of all, for my employees, for their safety, they're not under, on the rain or the snow anymore, you know, it has heat and cool. I just, I'm asking you, if Great A, that's a multi billionaire company, they offer that kind of operation for the power schooler, I will shut down that business tomorrow morning. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, they, they got a room inside, you know, we should go in, you know, they have salesperson and you buy your power batteries, they send that. But the power schoolers, they're working out in the snow and rain and all that.
They used to be Jim Houndshell.
What's that?
They used to be Jim Houndshell.
Uh, it used to be, uh, Jason and Linda's when they sold the DeCoer Brothers, and they are leasing it out to Great A right now.
That, Great A used to be Al Goto Parks, Al Houndshell, where Linda's at was Al's brother, June. And, and June had junkyard, where the highway come through, I know very, very well, it's as far as junkyard, I can call it, and stuff like that. The highway come through, Drexel Avenue, right?
But I really want the people here and the trustee, just have a consideration now, uh, take a look at the other junkyards that they have around here, not the one down the street, Quay Park. Not to be, they're good people, but it's not comfortable.
I have a question. Is that area probably zoned for the commercial, it's already zoned, yeah, yeah. And so you're talking about replacing an existing junkyard?
It's, it's already, I mean, how can I say that?
Used to be Bob Box Gas Station.
Is that on the corner?
It was already being, being occupied as a junkyard forever. What I'm trying to do, I'm trying to make it.
Sir, it used to be Gas Station.
I got a picture here, that, that picture explains everything.
It used to be a gas station, sir.
If you wanna see, just for your information, this is, this is what you see, it was, it was, you know, that's why I gotta say.